Welcome to the City Council Work Session. Today's date is, what is it?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
All day long, as far as the eye can see.
When hearing at home. So, the first thing up is items of interest to the council. Mayor. And I'd like to mention that today Eugene has been named one of the top 100 best places to live by livability. And this is with an institute, a leading think tank on the role of location place in city regions in global economic prosperity. They conducted a month-long study of more than 1,700 US cities. And we came in as number eight. Based on...
What number?
Eight. Education and healthcare opportunities and cultural and recreation opportunities and actually safety of the community compared to other cities. Something to be very pleased about. With that, on your list today, I think we're gonna, I'm gonna start with Chris. You've got a couple of issues to cover for your committees and one you went to that you didn't want to go to.
One that I filled in on. The first one I can talk about is Lane Council of Governments. We had our regular meeting a couple of weeks ago and probably the thing to talk about is, as you recall, ElCog went into its fiscal year with about a million-plus deficit. And since they've hired Brenda Wilson to be their executive director, she has reduced that deficit to where if, depending on exactly how you calculate the leftover amount at the end of the fiscal year, they're actually in the black by a very small amount of money. She has completely turned the organization around, not just all by herself. She will be the first one to tell you that staff has been very, very instrumental in helping to create the turnaround that ElCog has gone through. But it has been nothing short of miraculous and they all deserve an enormous amount of credit for really pitching in and working very hard. The Shapers Building downtown is being listed for sale. And so, as you know, that's right near the old LCC Downtown Center. So you could potentially have a significant amount of space for sale in downtown that could theoretically be used. So, that's a very exciting thing. The second one I want to talk about is I attended on behalf of the mayor, the Metropolitan Policy Committee meeting held, I believe it was thirteen weeks ago, at the library. It was a relatively short meeting because mostly it was president from ODOT and state about financing for street projects. And it was pretty straightforward. There was not really a lot of new information and the meeting was over fairly quickly. So there's not a huge amount to report from that. Those are really the two that I have.
My committees aren't listed here under committee reports, but I'll go ahead and give them anyway. So, the El Rapa Board met a few weeks ago and the main item on that agenda was the performance review for the Director Merlin Howe. And he received a high score performance review from the Board. And we grappled somewhat with how to recognize that in the compensation and ended up voting to provide him with a one-time incentive pay rather than add to his base pay to recognize his good work, but also recognize that budgets are tight and we couldn't necessarily do everything that we would want it to do in terms of recognizing his good work. And then, secondly, Police Commission met last week and the meeting before that I had missed where they'd had a panel on grappling with the issue of homelessness and how it intersects with law enforcement. And we had a follow-up conversation to that and discussed a motion to make some recommendations to police around how they enforce our criminal trespass. That motion did not pass, but it did engender a good conversation about the challenges around policing and how police interact with folks who are experiencing homelessness. And we tabled that discussion with partly at my motion because we recognized that there's a lot going on. It's not all just a police issue and the Police Commission at this point can't really lead that conversation. So, we're hoping that by tabling it, we can bring it back up at an opportune time in the future.
Okay. Alan?
I'll talk about the Sustainability Commission and a little bit about MPC. There's not that much going on there. Sustainability Commission, we have October 21st, which is next Wednesday? No, next Monday. The Sustainability Commission work plan is on our agenda. So, I won't talk about that very much, just to say that that's gonna be an item and you'll have that in your packet. And the Commission's been working on that pretty hard over the last couple of months. And we brought on board several new members, which are great additions to the Sustainability Commission. So, they're up and running and doing good work. There's also a report that's gonna be coming to all of us on the impacts of implementing the goals that we as council unanimously approved, like reducing fossil fuel consumption and becoming climate neutral and reducing solid waste. And the report's gonna focus on the actual reduction in our operating cost as a direct result of implementing those goals over time. And not to give it all away, to let you read it, but it's gonna be in the millions of dollars that the implementation over several years is gonna be in the millions of dollars in savings of the direct result of doing all those good things. Because the focus of those goals is, of course, to do the things that are smart things to do that make us more efficient and thereby reduce our energy use and thereby reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. So it's focused on all those things that are extremely cost-effective to do and thereby lowering our gasoline purchases and our electricity purchases and thereby saving us a lot of operating, which is very important from the budget perspective, as we all know we're going into that conversation for the next couple of months. So, look for that report. On MPC, there isn't that much going on. We just, we did have a packet a couple of weeks ago, an item in our packet a couple of weeks ago about some of the projects that were being put forward. And we talked a little bit about the mayor's great work at the statewide MPC where they allocated the monies on a statewide basis. And the Lane County MPC ended up in a really good spot. And we have numerous projects. And there was a long list of all those projects that are in Lane County, several of which are new or that you could refer back to. I don't think there's anything too pressing coming up on that.
Only thing I'd say about that is that we're in very good position for getting what was on that list that we asked for, but you don't have it until the OTC signs...
Until the OTC, yeah.
The Oregon Transportation Commission signs off on it, which won't happen for months. But the word is, we're in very good position.
Yeah, until the OTC sings. So, I don't think there's anything else on MPC that's really of too much importance going on now. All those kind of processes for getting those projects in the queue are what we've been working on over the last several months. So, they're kinda winding down. The only other thing I'll mention about MPC is the scenario planning and the Lane Livability Consortium groups are working together. There's a new person on board that's working on the Scenario Planning Grant that we got from ODOT and that work is going forward. So that work is moving forward. Of course, the focus there is working on those actions and identifying those things through the Scenario Planning exercise that can actually save people money. We were talking about just now about the city saving money on transportation costs. These are actions that can save everybody in the city, transportation costs and energy costs, gasoline and...
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I would say that with my committee's intergovernmental relations isn't meeting at this time. Claire did a very good job of reviewing Police Commission work with one exception. Not exception, but I suppose I might add that there have now been two Police Commission meetings where issues around homelessness have been discussed and how the police interact with them. We had a panel in the last month's presentation and a conversation this last time. I would say that the motion to continue that conversation, though, I would characterize it maybe somewhat differently, that there are some members of the Police Commission who are perhaps more activist in nature, who would like to take a greater role in addressing general policy issues around homelessness and how the city deals with that, rather than the specific work of the Police Commission to address police interaction. And I think that had a good deal to do with why any further work was tabled at this time until we have something more specific that involves the police to deal with. I would say that Claire and I also have the opportunity to work on the Beltline Redesign Steering Committee that did meet several months ago. I think we commented on that. We'll have another meeting soon, but I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware that we're quickly narrowing down on options for the redesign, look for Beltline interchange between Coburg and River Road predominantly there. And we will see one of those scenarios at council, one or two, I would think, probably within the year to look at that. I would also remind folks that this next Thursday, the 24th, at 7:00 PM at Sheldon Community Center, right next to the pool, will be the Cal Young Neighborhood Association meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. George?
Thanks, Mayor. I attended the McKenzie Watershed Council's annual retreat last week and we reviewed the success of the goals from the year before and came up with a slate of new goals. We actually did pretty well. There's tons of outreach to schoolchildren, both for Salmon Watch and for teaching them how to monitor water quality and do species counts and things like that. Over a thousand kids attended the Salmon Watch from all over Eugene and Springfield and Cottage Grove. So they're learning about the fish and the river. Actually, some of the high school stuff in Springfield is these kids are gonna, they could actually go work somewhere because they will be familiar with lab work and proper handling of samples and analysis. So, that was good. McKenzie Watershed Council was instrumental in lots of tree plantings. They're currently involved, along with E-Web, in getting private landowners to plant trees along the river. That will provide shade, especially the south side of the river. That will provide shade, lower the water temperature as it enters... I also attended Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission meeting and the issues are very closely related. You may have seen the article in the paper a few days ago. It was slightly misleading. The fact is, perhaps more than slightly misleading, the DEQ's involved with discussions with every watershed council and, more importantly, wastewater management facilities to determine what the temperature load on the Willamette River should be. We'll never be able to restore it to natural conditions before human settlement. And of course, it's the desire of all of the facilities to do as little damage as possible. Everyone respects the downstream users' rights to have clean water and also protect the fish. The colder the water, the better it is for spawning. So, it's an ongoing thing. The lawsuit's kind of hung it up. There's still many uncertainties. We don't know exactly what the new requirements will be, so that's an ongoing discussion. Could take as long as another year or so to figure that out, but we will eventually reach a good solution. Thanks.
Ready?
Thank you. I was on the McKenzie Watershed Board for quite a few years and I'm glad that George is taking over and doing a good job there. But I'm also glad to hear that something I read wasn't, was misleading. I read about dumping a lot more sewage into the river.
Not true.
Not true.
No.
That was rather alarming. And those things remind me that we still need to do something about the Amazon Headwaters when we think about water quality and water temperature. The water temperature is already too high there and there's already too much pollution and it's really important not to have housing development there. The city needs to do something about that. I attended the Workforce Partnership Board Executive Committee meeting. The regular board meeting will be a week from tomorrow at the Valley River Center. And those meetings are open to the public. No one ever comes, but on every agenda, there's an item that says "Public Comment" and we look around. And we had an executive meeting yesterday and I can't talk about that yet. But then we opened the door, the people clamoring to come in, there was nobody there. And we're mainly, well, we're reorganizing because of the governor has mandated some reorganization. I can tell you more about that later. And we're looking for a new executive director and that's in progress. And that's all I have to say about that.
Great.
Thanks, Mayor. Actually, about three reports here. The Human Rights Commission meeting I attended last night, at least for part of the meeting before I had to go over to the Budget Committee Outreach Meeting at South Eugene. Our meeting basically focused on a couple of different items. As you know, last week, we approved the work plan for the Human Rights Commission for this year. We also have had several changes in terms of the composition of membership of the commission. Most recently, Tony Gatto, who was our chair for the last few years, resigned, left the commission. And so, right now, Andrew Thompson, the vice chair, is the acting chair of the commission. We have new members, including David Van Der Haegen, Edward Goring, Mary Clayton, Philip Carrasco, and Arun Tukay. So, we've had a significant change over in membership. My report last night centered on a couple of different things, mainly the budget and kind of the plans for what's happening in a community-wide celebration for MLK this year. And so, there's some things that are happening, but those plans have not quite gelled yet. And then I had to take off for another meeting. And there's a continued conversation, of course, about the homeless situation. So, that's front and center on everybody's mind. Human Services Commission Counselor Sarette and I went on a road trip/field trip up to Portland with folks from the human service area, Steve Manella and some other folks that we went up there and we did a road trip to Bud Clark Commons, which is a facility for homeless folks, a shelter right down there by Union Station in Portland. And they're doing a fabulous job with that. There's some things that we can learn from that. Of course, Portland has a lot more capacity to affect those kinds of things than what we do, but there may be some things that we can do with repurposing our funding to be able to focus on creating a shelter vehicle that will ultimately not address all of our problems with homelessness, but make a significant dent there. And so, I think the goal is to look for more long-term solutions than the patchwork of short-term solutions that we're trying to get through right now. So I think that that has some promise and I think that, you know, we're getting the players to come together to coalesce around that idea of a long-term strategy. The Public Safety Coordinating Committee, I wasn't able to attend the meeting last month. We're going to be meeting again early in December. I will be able to make that meeting. And later, I did send you guys an email about a report that's forthcoming with regard to the Memphis trip about urban farming and food safety. I'm still working on that. I'll be at State of Millie Commission meeting tonight with Counselors Lenka to do a report there. But I will make sure that, you know, council gets a written report from me shortly. I've got a few other things I gotta get off my plate.
George?
Thank you. Traveling County, actually, we are meeting next Thursday over in Florence, so I'll put on that. We do have an executive committee meeting this afternoon. So, I would like to just remind folks that on Wednesday, the 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Sheldon Community Center, we'll be doing the Budget Committee Outreach there. So, I invite people to attend that. Chris and I will be meeting with Police Auditor next Tuesday. And then also, on Thursday, in addition to Cal Young Neighborhood meeting at 7:00, the Harlow Neighborhood Association has a meeting at 6:00 at the North Park Community Church. And one of the topics that we'll be discussing will be the zoning issue around the property at, I believe it's 955 Coburg or 995 Coburg. It's, used to belong to a doctor, it was a big, single-family dwelling and the new owners of the property were wanting to move in apartment complexes, I believe. So, they've been having ongoing discussions. I've kind of stepped back from those discussions. I haven't gotten involved in it, but that will be one of the topics that's covered at the Harlow Neighborhood Association meeting. So, I encourage all the people involved and people in the Harlow neighborhood to show up for that meeting.
So, maybe, City Manager, you might have something you want to say, but I wanted to ask also if we have, if it'd be a good time to give the list of any other meetings that we have for the Budget Committee for the next week, if anybody has that handy.
Sheldon.
I heard Sheldon.
Sheldon's on Wednesday.
That's the only one?
North Eugene's on Thursday.
Yeah.
24th.
So, there's North Eugene on the 24th? I just thought, I guess this would be, anything that's coming up soon, we should remind people and keep doing that as we go along.
Right. 23rd at Sheldon, 24th at North Eugene, both of which we're...
Willamette's the next one.
And those are meetings where the public is invited to help discuss the budget decisions that we have ahead.
That's correct. On the 29th, it's at Willamette High School and then on the 30th, it's at Churchill.
Okay. Thank you for that. So, Alan had his hand up and Greg had his hand up.
I just wanted to clarify one thing about that Register Guard article that was in the paper the other day about the MWMC. We are not pumping sewage into the river. The recycled water that they were talking about in that article is actually cleaner than the water that is currently coming out of the treatment plant and going into the river. It's actually a tertiary type of system that goes through an additional cleanup process that is then able to be used as a recycled water, not drinkable water, but used in a sanitary and clean way. So it's cleaner than the stuff that we're actually putting in the river right now. It's just a matter of taking that water and figuring out what to use it for. If you can't find a good use for it, then, which is very, very common in California and other places, to use that water for golf courses, for irrigation, all sorts of different places where it can be used very easily. But it's that additional treatment process that costs a little bit more. So if we can't do anything with it, it'll actually end up going out to the Poplar Farm and being spray irrigated, using it as irrigation water for the Poplar Farm. So it's not sewage going into the Willamette.
Greg?
One other thing with regard to budget meetings I wanted to call out, and that is the FIT team meetings. FIT, for those of you who don't know what that acronym means out in the community, is Finance Investigative Team, which basically is kind of, in my mind metaphorically, is kind of the forensics of the budget, the CSI kind of deal. And, well, bad analogy, but still, you know, it's close.
You have to wear a suit. Walking over a lot of bodies.
In metaphor.
But Counselor Brown and I have attended the first three. There are two more meetings. There was some issue around public access to the meetings that I think that we have now rectified and want people to know, yes, you can come to those meetings. And, you know, it's not necessarily participation, which you can be involved in those meetings and see kind of what we're doing in terms of identifying specific areas where we have to deal with budget resources, whether that be police, fire, parks, all of that, just kind of confirming the issues and the situation that was currently at hand. So, we've been through that exercise. And one personal note, my son, Keenan, is out there in the audience doing a homework project for a class he's taking at the U of O. And I am not trying to get you to become a planner, Keenan, so don't worry about that.
Do you have to be nice to him?
No, no, you can be nice to him. You don't have to be nice to him.
If I do good. I only wanted to add to that because when you bring up the FIT, it always brings to mind, but it doesn't place it, recommendations are gonna come from for the Budget Committee and that's not its purpose. Its purpose is to validate the information that the Budget Committee will be using. So, that's, he's looking at, that is the reason it exists.
Okay.
It is not, there will be no recommendations coming from that committee for budgetary decisions. It is to give them information that people feel like they have verified is accurate and true.
Just the facts.
Just the facts, yes.
And that committee was, is comprised of Budget Committee, City Councilors and community members that was selected by the management team, which is the City Manager, the Mayor, the President and the Chair of the Budget Committee. They're meeting over the next couple of weeks.
Right.
And hopefully, the issues around the public notice has been cleared up so that people can get to them.
That's true.
And both Counselor Brown and I volunteered, so if there are rest, you'd like to volunteer to attend, you're welcome. Because I can't do the next two.
The only other thing I wanted to let you know, and then we'll move on into the next agenda item, which I think people are really interested in, is that tomorrow I am going up to Seattle to attend a forum on divestment that I told you that I would bring up at some point and alerted you to. And I'm just letting you know that I'm going up there to, because several cities have been through the process and I want to learn more about it before we take a look at it. So, that will be coming up this week. All right, Ann. So we're gonna move into, unless you have anything you need to add?
The only thing I was gonna mention is, our Veterans Housing Project has another house in the queue that's undergoing rehab right now. And so, if anybody wants to help volunteer on that, please let me know and we'd be happy to plug you in over the next few months.
Thank you for doing that. All right, on to Civic Stadium.
Sarah?
Yeah. It's a challenge to try to figure out how to get Glenn up to the table. I'm Sarah Madari, Assistant City Manager, for those watching at home. And I'm gonna walk you through kind of the Civic Stadium AIS and kind of prepare you for a discussion. It's no surprise with a property that's been in existence since 1938, there's a lot of information out there on Civic, a lot of historical records, a lot of reviews, environmental reports. So, what I attempted to do as part of the AIS was summarize that down to what may be the key information you need to make a decision about how you want to proceed. And then today, I'm gonna kind of summarize the summary. So, bear with me as I walk you through it because there was a lot of information in here. So, you know, really, while we're here, 4J has a current RFP process that they announced on October 4th with a deadline of submissions for December 3rd at 2:00 PM. We know from that process that they're going to rank potential proposals on a 100-point scale, 50 points for revenue and the other 50 points kind of allocated between benefits for 4J, benefits to the community and preservation of the stadium. We also know that after the December 3rd deadline, they're likely to take a smaller group, up to three people, and do some additional process and presentations. So really, as a part of submitting for that, if you choose to submit to that, you need a little bit of background and history on the site and information. This is the second RFP that 4J has put out on the site. The last one was in 2010. Went through a very similar process, yielding three proposals. A spreadsheet of the proposals was included in your packet as Attachment A on page 44 and we may need to refer to that a couple of times. It's very high-level financial summary, but it gets into the details of what people offered for purchase, for lease, and you may need to reference it as you go through. 4J ultimately did not choose one of the proposals and decided instead to take a more thorough look and have a community conversation about all the different properties they have and help them prioritize what the financial needs were, what the property needs were. So they finished that process and ultimately concluded that, again, Civic Stadium wasn't really needed for educational uses and they would be best suited to put it back out for purchase, lease or trade. So a little bit about the site. There's a map in your packet as Attachment B. I put a color copy at your site because I thought it was just a little bit easier if you end up having conversations about specific properties. It reads a little bit better. The whole site is approximately 10 acres, three tax lots. The main tax lot that people focus a lot of attention on is the one that's surrounded in blue. That is the... That is the stadium lot. It's referred to as the stadium lot. It's about 9.33 acres. And then the area that has the purple around it are the north tax lots, drip .19 and .49 acres. Those are also included. Uh, the RFP allows, I'll go to that later. In 2009, so again, in your packets, Attachment C and D, there are, starting on page 48, the, your, it's where 48 would normally start, but I noticed that the packet stopped numbering between 48 and someplace else. There's some information about inspections that city staff did. We did this on, at the request of 4J to walk through. This was at the time when the Ms. were considering leaving, and they were trying to get an idea of what are the minimum things that need to be done, what are the structural, mechanical, plumbing, electrical concerns that they might need to address. So it was pretty unusual for us to do that, to put together a team of inspectors and go do that, but that's the type of partnership we've had for 4J, with 4J for a long time. And so we did that. It didn't mean any great conclusions. We mostly just identified code concerns. And we did not review for some of the things that have come up in subsequent proposals around ADA or any other city code issues that weren't really state-adopted building codes. After the inspection, there were some members of the Chamber of Commerce, some of the trade members, that also looked at that report. I think they did their own inspection, and they came up with what they thought would need to be an investment to bring it back to minor league baseball standards. That is included as Attachment D. I put that at your seat as the corrected version. Overall, the report suggested the stadium and the field would need about $10 million to bring it up to that level of standard to keep the Ms. Of course, we know the Ms. have left and gone to the University of Oregon Stadium, so it may be that a different proposal would bring a different result. Over the years, there have been multiple looks at the structural integrity of the stadium. I know Counselor Brown provided some recent estimates by Turner Construction, and there may be others out there to consider as well. Because much of the inspection and budget work was completed over two years ago, this is an area that may need further analysis before understanding the true costs of restoring the stadium. This would be most accurate if we tailored it to a specific proposal or an outcome you were trying to achieve. Lastly, our staff prepared an estimate of maintenance costs associated with holding the property in what we call mothballed state. The amount of $30,000 a year was based on existing information we had from 4J about how their, how their staff are handling it, and we built a lot of assumptions into that. Most important, meaning that there was no public access, we wouldn't be doing any more maintenance that's being done there, we would continue to use volunteers, and it also assumed that there wasn't a significant degradation of the site that would cause more maintenance to be needed. So that's a bare-bones estimate of minimal ground maintenance, security, and vandalism repair. So where to go from here? As outlined in the RFP process, 4J is accepting offers on a portion or all of the site, though they reserve the right to give preferences to full-site proposals. Additionally, they're accepting offers of purchase, lease, or trade, and again, they're reserving the right to give preference on outright purchase or lease. Talk a little bit about the purchase option. If the city were to pursue outright purchase of the site, an amount and funding source would need to be identified. As you know from the first RFP, outright purchase offers range from approximately 3.5 to 4.75 million. Lease options range from 5.5 to 7.2 million over a 20-year term. Those are detailed in Attachment A that I referred to earlier in your packet. A new information released last night by 4J has also been distributed at your seats. That information shows a range of potential value starting at around $5 million. Most discussions to date regarding funding sources have revolved around the unexpended 2006 park bonds funds. Attachment F, on page 74 of your packet, outlined the current and anticipated use of those funds. That information indicates there's approximately $4 to $5 million that has not been spent or planned for in negotiations for future purchase. A number of considerations were outlined in the packet, from, is this consistent with what the voters' intent was, and the bond approval, what else might these funds be used for, and the rules around funds, how they can and can't be used. The city attorney determined the funds could legally be used to purchase the site as a park, but not to maintain, renovate, or lease the property. Other options could include the use of existing general fund reserves. I should say other legal options. As pointed out in the AIS, the reserve for revenue shortfall has a balance of $4.9 million. This is a 3.8% balance, which is already far below our 8% target. Another option could be the Facility Reserve Fund, which is currently by council policy dedicated to the replacement of City Hall. Again, their legal may not be preferable. An additional option that was included in the AIS is the possibility of asking the voters through a new bond to support the purchase and/or restoration of the facility. Lease option. In 2010, the annual lease payments offered ranged from $70,000 to $300,000 in year one. By year three, even the $70,000 offer had increased to $300,000. So you would know at year three, $300,000 a year would be the minimum you would expect to be competitive. Park bonds could not be used for this strategy, so an alternate funding source would need to be identified. Trade. The trade proposal is the least favored by 4J, as indicated in the RFP process, giving preference or reserving the right to give preference to purchase or lease. It could also be the most challenging to solve before the December 3rd deadline. Exploratory conversations with 4J have not readily revealed a property or a simple solution. The last page of the AIS laid out some financial considerations addressing acquisition, renovation, and maintenance. Depending on the final decision, other operational costs may need to be considered, but for today, the summary of this is this, remembering this is all based on existing information. We haven't gone out and done new estimates, new bids. A purchase cost can be expected in the $3.5 to $5.5 million range. This is based on earlier proposals and today's current appraisal. Renovation costs, and that would be to keep it in public use. Renovation costs, again, this could vary based on final use of the site, but the $10 million estimate to bring it up to minor league standards is a reasonable amount of items that would need to be corrected, given the additional years of weather and degradation. Maintenance costs, I addressed that all earlier, would be around $30,000 a year. And then we also included a part on cost recovery and partnerships, and it wasn't, it's, this is a tough one, challenging to estimate, but we thought it was important to just point out that as we look at the proposals, it's unlikely to think that the city will get reimbursed for the acquisition or even potentially all of the renovation. The proposals for uses that save the stadium are dependent on significant fundraising campaigns, and it's unclear how either the short or long-term financial commitments would impact the city. We'd need to do a lot more work on that. So with that, we have a number of staff here that can probably answer questions if you get into specific areas around parks, or bonding, or, you know, any number of things. So I'll just leave it open for questions and see if there's more information we can provide.
I have Mike in the queue now, I have Betty in the queue. Anybody else want to go in now? George? Um, Mike.
Might as well just start the whole round-robin process here. I, uh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I appreciate, um, having read through all the materials that George has prepared over time as well. He's put a lot of hard work and a lot of time into this effort, and I really respect and appreciate that. I want to say that I appreciate the staff's thorough work here. I think it's important for us, before we come to a decision on this, to do a very thorough job in examining all the potential options where we might participate. I, I think it's fairly exhaustive, and that's important for the community to know that we did that work. But that having been said, although Civic Stadium, Civic is, is near and dear to so many people's hearts, the city just simply can't afford to buy, to renovate, and to maintain this property. And I'm hopeful that today we will finally allow the school district to finish with their process unhindered and let our community get on with it. Thank you.
Betty?
I agree, you've given us a lot of information, but I didn't hear anything about grants, the possibility of grants for preserving a historic structure. Have you looked into that?
I have not, but I'm assuming the, the other partners that are looking at that have. I didn't do any research on grants.
I assume that that, I'm assuming that that might be, mean that we wouldn't have to do maintenance and upkeep or rehabilitation if grants are available. I do think that it's important that we do whatever we can to preserve this for its historic significance as, not just the sentimental significance, I know it's a sentimental matter to some people, but it's, it's a historic structure that we are, we really gave it to 4J many years ago, and they don't want to give it back to us, but I think that we should make an offer to purchase it. And with the Parks Bond money, which, of which we have enough to do this, and it fits within the purpose of the Parks Bond, which was land acquisition. It's true, we don't have the money to maintain it, but I think we have citizens who are willing to, um, work on that once they know that the property is secure and that it's going to be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, um, the city, I don't believe that anybody expects the city to finance renovations or maintain the facility or manage the facility once it's been purchased. To do that would be, you know, you'd have to hire FTEs, hire people that have that experience, and I, nobody's suggesting that. There is a tremendous desire in the community to preserve that property as a sports venue. I mean, I just go down a little bit of history here, you know, 1938, they just needed 4J for $1 with explicit expectation that it would be used for recreation in perpetuity. And, um, the judge ruled that they didn't have to do that, they could sell it to anybody they wanted to. When I submitted my work session poll request last July, the outcome of the, the stated outcome was, and I'll just quote this, "To preserve this important piece of Eugene's heritage and make it an attractive and active community venue again." This relates directly to envision Eugene Pillar V. Quote, "Recognize the value that historic properties contribute to community character and lovablety and work to preserve those properties. So far, we're in alignment." Then last month, their council majority passed two motions directing the City Manager to acquire via purchase, trade, or lease, and help preserve, help preserve at little or no net cost to the city. So we, we have our guideline here, and, and what we need to talk about today is that we directed the City Manager in the second motion to come up with a plan for, for acquiring the property from 4J, using different options, and so that's, that's really what we need to focus on, um, in my opinion. So site control has to come first. There's lots of people walking around town who, with deep pockets and shallow pockets, private individuals and businesses, you count me in that group in both categories, who are willing and ready to donate amounts of money, large and small, and materials and labor, and join the group of volunteers that have been working on this property for the last few years, but they have no vessel to channel their energy into. So if the city owns the site, now we've, now we've provided a vessel, and the way, a possible way to do that is, well, I'll, I'll continue in another round, but site control has to come first. That's the very first requirement.
Um, next up is Chris, and then George Poling. And then Greg.
Thank you. This is, this is obviously a very complex question. There's a lot of things swirling around it, and, um, there are still a lot of unanswered questions. Some of them are unanswered because they're dealing with information that's four, five, six years old. Some of them are disputes between pieces of information that we have. One number doesn't agree with another number. And also, the unknowns. Uh, you know, once you get into something, and, and as we've talked about before, renovating something is the most expensive option you can do. You always get surprised, so you don't know what the cost is ultimately going to be when you're going to try to renovate something. It's not that I am opposed to using this as a recreational venue. I think that's a great idea, actually. I, I like that. My concern is about encumbering the city in a way that we can't manage. And to me, acquiring the property without knowing exactly what you're going to do with it or what the end game is, is like going into war where you don't know how you're going to get yourself out of it. And to me, we've learned the lesson of you don't get involved in a war if you don't know how you're going to get out of the war. Don't get involved in a stadium if you don't know how you're going to get out of that or what you're going to do as a result. So acquiring the property is the first step, but it's not the only step, and it's the first step that has many steps that go with it. And I think being able to have a clear plan of what you're going to do once you acquire that site becomes a critical element of the conversation. You don't buy something not knowing what you're going to do after you've bought it. And to hope the community will step up with fundraising, I've made a lot of fundraising presentations, and I've received a lot of fundraising presentations, and, and God bless them, they're great presentations, but many, many of them don't pan out. So I can't depend on fundraising, whether it's my own or somebody else's. That's really the long way around of saying, "I am very interested in what potentially this might be as a recreation venue, as a sports venue, as a, as a potential revenue-maker for the community. Therefore, let's let the community, if it really and truly, as George says, has an enormous amount of belief in this, let's bring the community in and let's get in, let's get the community involved." That's why I would be supportive of the idea of going for a bond measure that would not only acquire the property, but would do the renovation that needs to get done. So there's no more question about cobbling together all these little amounts of money to try to do something good. We could pass a bond measure, the community could show its support. The community could step up with the money necessary to not only acquire the property, but to turn it into what the community wants it to be. And you may be talking about, you know, only seven, eight, nine, $10 million bond. That's not an undoable bond, but it is more important in its expression of the community's support for this facility by stepping up to not only acquire the property, but to develop the property and turn it into what people want it to be.
Poling?
Thank you. I don't think there's any question whether or not we can purchase the property with the bond, Parks Bond money, but I don't think that's the wisest use of that money. And like Chris was saying, you know, I just totally disagree with the idea of let's buy it and then figure out what we're going to do with it, because it's going to cost us at minimum $30,000 a year out of our parks' maintenance money, which we don't have enough to maintain our current parks, to mothball that, that property until these volunteers step forward, like, like George was saying, and something gets developed on that property. You know, another thing, we're working very closely as a city with the Y to develop something in the Bethel-Danabo area, yet we turn right around and in direct competition with them over Civic Stadium. To me, that's sending a mixed message to not only the Y, but to the entire community. I think we should maintain our focus on working hand-in-hand with the Y on the, on the Bethel-Danabo area and, and forget about this, this idea of trying to buy Civic Stadium. And I disagree with George. I understand his, his point of view, and, and again, like Mike, I appreciate all the work and research he's done into this, but I don't think the, the best description of a tremendous interest in, in preserving this property throughout the community is an accurate, an accurate description, because if you read the emails that we've been getting recently, not all of them are in favor of this idea. You know, and as far as these people in the community with the deep pockets and they're willing to step forward with supplies and materials, and they don't have anywhere to channel that effort, why haven't they stepped forward and formed their own group, or stepped forward and, and joined forces with the Save Civic group? Why is it always the city having to step in and bail everybody else out when we're busy bailing ourselves out? And I think the upcoming conversations we're going to be having throughout the community are, about our budget alone, is enough to, for us to step away from this idea, let 4J deal with it and, and run their process. And as far as the bond measure, you know, this process is coming up, you know, due at the end of the year. There's no way we're going to be able to get a bond measure out and vote it on by then, and I'm sure 4J wants to move forward with the disposition of their property. So by throwing out the, the bond measure idea, I think we're just throwing a monkey wrench into 4J's plans and what they want to do with the property. I understand it's a good idea, it's a way to maybe resolve this issue, but I think it's, it's the wrong way in a bad way.
Greg?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I have wrestled with this. George, George Brown and I have, have, have tried to, you know, bring this issue forward in the context of assessing the pros and cons of, you know, a purchase by the city of this, you know, facility of this property. One of my One of my goals in this, where it may differ a little bit with George, quite, maybe quite a bit with George on this, is that after assembling the research and the documentation around this, it becomes real clear to me that, given our current position in the city with regard to the budget, what we may or may not have to go back to the voters and ask them for this next spring, the potential of not minor budget cuts, but severe budget cuts that probably, and I'm just anticipating this, will directly fall on our recreation programs. We may, the reality of us closing, you know, community centers and swimming pools is very close at hand, because we just don't have the revenue and resources to do that. Yes, we can, you know, acquire this property with part bond money, but there are certain constraints on what we do with that property after we acquire it. And I know that the city attorney has, you know, given us some guidance around that. So we have some limitations there. I would love to preserve Civic Stadium in a perfect world, but this is not a perfect world, this is not a perfect situation, and we have certain fiscal realities that are pressing upon us in addition to the workload that the staff would acquire, which they can't already meet the needs that we have now in terms of workload. There's too much work and there's not enough staff to do it. So, you know, as tough of a decision as this is, you know, I think that we, you know, as a city should not, I have to agree with Counselor Poling, Counselor Clark, and, you know, Counselor Pryor. I don't think that we are in the position to move forward with an acquisition of this property without having the kind of plan in place and the resource identification to be able to rehab the property, sustain the property, mothball the property as it currently is configured.
Mayor?
Thank you. So I really appreciate the work that was put into preparing for this session, and I appreciate Counselor Brown and Counselor Evans bringing us to the point of having this conversation. I think it's an important conversation. I think Civic is a historical asset, and as Counselor Evans says, in a perfect world, we would not be discussing how to keep it from being demolished. We would be discussing how to use it and looking forward to doing that. But I'm finding it very challenging. We are in a real serious financial bind, and I think the city may not be the white knight that I had been hoping we could be when we first set out to have this conversation. I think it's very sad that, as we look through the inspection reports that the city did when the Ems left there, to see the condition that 4J and the U of L let the stadium fall into, so that it's deteriorated so badly that renovation becomes a huge expense. So I think that's a shame. I really appreciate Counselor Pryor's comments. I do think the bigger challenge even than just identifying potential funds for the city to use to purchase is what would be the plan. And I guess I had been hopeful that by identifying this work session, that some of the folks out in the community who believe that there is a viable plan would have come forward and presented with us, presented us with some of the means with which they saw that plan being implemented, and we haven't seen that happen. So for me, right now, it's still too unclear that even if we were able to acquire it, that we would be able to find the way forward for it to be a successful recreation facility or park. I still believe that that is possible, but I don't know that in reality we can put all those pieces together and still fulfill the other obligations we have as a city in terms of our financial obligations. I did have a question for the city attorney, which relates to the work that we are doing with the Y around a potential lease of parts of Bethel Community Park. So we were being told that if we were to purchase Civic with the park bond money, we would not be able to lease it to another entity, and yet it sounds like that's what we are planning to do in Bethel Community Park. So if you could clarify the distinction with that project for me, that would be helpful.
I'm not sure, a couple of things. I'm not sure how Bethel was acquired, whether it used these bond funds, other bond funds, other funds. So I'd need to know that before I could say, is it exactly the same as this? My advice to you all wasn't that you couldn't lease property to somebody else. What you couldn't do is use bond funds to lease the property from 4J. You have to use bond funds to purchase property, because they're general obligation bonds. You can't use general obligation bonds to make a lease payment to somebody else. The issue about then, okay, if we acquire with the bond funds, what can you actually do with the property? It's a lot more complicated. I gave, I can't remember if it was an email to all of you, I gave you two extremes. On the one hand, we enter into non-exclusive use agreements with kids, sports, 4J, Bethel, others, to allow entities to use our parks some of the time and to have the public use the parks the rest of the time. That one certainly you can do. It's still considered a public park. The public has access to it, you know, on a daily basis, weekly basis, whatever it is. The other extreme that I gave you was you acquire with the park bond funds, and then you enter into an exclusive lease, say a five-year lease, with a semi-pro soccer team. So it's being used as a soccer stadium, but it's not available to the public at all other than to go watch the soccer games. That would not be considered a public park for purposes of the bond measure. There's a lot of area in between those two extremes. I can't give you a black and white. Here's what's okay, here's what's not okay. If that was the direction that the council decided you wanted to go, then what I'd need to do is hear the outcome you're trying to achieve, then we could have a conversation with bond counsel to have bond counsel help us figure out, okay, so is what you're proposing okay, is it not? I couldn't have that conversation in the abstract with bond counsel.
Thank you.
Does that help you?
Yes, that is helpful.
Alan?
So I think that Civic Stadium's a very valuable community asset, and that we should preserve it if we can. The vision for it being an events venue and supporting school teams and community teams, like a professional soccer team, is a really good one, and it's worth putting, worth pursuing. I was supportive of this idea a year and a half ago when we presented that proposal to do a very similar thing and have the city go in on round one, but the council didn't choose that. The plan that makes sense to me is that we first buy Civic Stadium, and then there are many unanswered questions and many issues that need to be solved. And then we set up a process and try to figure those things out and make this work at a minimal cost to the city, including a financing plan. So then we treat it as a park, and by the way, all of our parks are subsidized without much notice and without much complaint, because they're valuable community assets. And then allow, and allow access to the public like Glenn was talking about, so we can use the park in a multitude of different ways. And then, and maybe even a potentially least costly model, like we do with Laurelwood Golf Course, which is probably our least costly park, that where we get revenue from it. So maybe that, all those things need to be talked about, including the plan to renovate it through either a bond or grants or community donations or a park special district that Greg was talking about. But we can't do any of that until we acquire the property. And there's simply not enough time between now and December, beginning of December, to be able to do all of that stuff and figure that all out. The mothball costs of doing this are very minimal, and they're modest. So I think in the interim, we would involve the community, capture all that energy and expertise that's been working on this for a long time, and put some structure to it that only the city can provide to be able to try to make this work. The exit strategy that Chris was talking about, I've been thinking about it quite a bit, too. If we can't make this work, if we can't get that process to work, I think then we end up selling the property. And it puts us in similar circumstance that the community finds itself today. At least we would have tried to do that. The risk to me would be really small, that we wouldn't be able to get most, if not all, of the money, and maybe with the value appreciation of the property, even make money on the resale if we ended up going there. But, and all that money would go back to the park bonds, because it necessarily would have to, so it could be used, recycled and reused for other park bonds. Very cognizant of the current circumstance we see in our budget, but I believe that we'll solve that this summer and we'll be moving on. So I think this is a low-risk strategy, low-cost strategy. It buys us time, and it's worth giving it a try.
So next round, I have George Brown and Betty, but I wanted to say just a couple One, that we're not interfering with, as characterized with 4J. I think they have an RFP process out, and we either choose to participate in it or we don't choose to participate in it, but we're not holding up anything or interfering with anything, and I want to be clear about that. The other thing I want to be clear about is, even if we don't like the results, the courts decided that the 4J gets to make the determination of the destiny of that piece of property. So no matter what we think about it, whether we would think they should use it X-way or Y-way, the courts have decided for us that we don't get to make that determination. So we're sort of stuck with the result of the court case. And the third thing I wanted to say is, and I just, I'll need some help with from the manager or from Glenn, is the current direction that the council has given, told you that their intention was to purchase the property, and they wanted you to bring back options for doing so. Is that the current status?
The motion that the council passed at its last meeting was, and I think it's quoted in the AIS, the way I interpret it is, the council wants to consider providing a response to the RFP and directed the manager to bring back to the council options for acquiring. That's a little bit different, Mayor, than what you said, because I did not read into the council motion that was last passed that the council intended to acquire. What I heard the council say is, you want to consider acquiring, so you need more information, know what those options look like. Even if the motion was the council intends to acquire, you still have the ability, the council has the ability to change that, but that's not how I read the motion.
All I wanted to clarify is where we were in the process, so if we were heading in a direction, that was not the direction people wanted to continue going, that what we would have to do to verify or not to verify that. That is, that's what I wanted to surface here, because I think that could come up for some contention about what we were already directing to do.
So the direction that the council gave in that context was to have this work session to bring back the information that is in the AIS and that Sarah provided. Absent another motion from the council today, then my interpretation of what you've done is you gave direction to do something that has been done, and there wouldn't be anything else for the manager to do unless you give additional direction.
Thank you. I just wanted to make that clarification. All right, so first up is George Brown, and then Betty.
Well, the direction that we gave the manager was to come back with the plan for our consideration, and what we have in front of us today is not a plan. So that step has not yet been fulfilled. The plan to offer, to make the offer to 4J by December 6th, as it currently stands, so that hasn't been fulfilled. You know, we still have some work to see on this. I understand leasing is one of the options that we can no longer use. We cannot lease the property from 4J. It's prohibited by bond regulations. However, we haven't heard very much about trade, land trade, and we have heard that we can legally purchase the property with the bond fund. So that's where we're at right now, but we have not heard any, even an outline of deal points that the manager might make to the school district. Also, I'd like, I'd just like to point out that in 4J's RFP document, they have, the board of directors has the option to cancel the solicitation and reject any and all proposals. They can cancel it outright. Number two, they can postpone the selection of the apparent successful proposer for a period not to exceed 90 days. We could potentially ask them to do one or both of those, either one of those, and we have not yet done so, and that might be a good motion for a council to pass. Number three, waive informalities. So these are options, too. We haven't asked 4J. I mean, if the manager needs more time to put together a credible plan, that council, and the council would still have to approve the plan, but we don't know what the plan is yet. And so that's what a majority of us said we want to see the plan. So that's the first thing we need to know, and not get diverted down into two side discussions. I mean, this was clear council direction, so we need to move that way. And I really agree with pretty much everything that Counselor Zelenka said. The first motion that council passed, the first of the two motions, the plans, one of the alternatives is permanent acquisition and operations by the City of Eugene. I don't think any of us want to do that. You're absolutely right. The people that have been expressing concern about the budget, and I'm very concerned about the budget, too. This is something I do not want the city to go down that road.
Another round, Counselor Brown?
Yes, I'll need another round.
I have Betty, Mike, and Chris in the queue.
Thank you. I thought Alan said it very well, that there is minimum risk and requires a minimum investment. I think we should go ahead and purchase it. It does have to be a thing that people can work on. It needs to be secure before people start spending huge amounts of money, citizens. And I think the biggest risk is losing a community asset, which we have an opportunity to preserve, and that is a tremendous risk. As, part of what Alan said was, if it doesn't work out, we can sell it, and that's, this is a prime piece of land, and I'm sure that the value will increase. We're not making any more land surrounded by the city. If that, if that's what it had to come to, I'm sure that we could sell it and make a profit, which would go back into the parks bond issue. But I think that we should decide, I thought we had decided, actually, to ask the manager to come back with a way to make an offer, but I think we should make an offer to purchase as soon as possible, definitely before the deadline that 4J has established. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the mayor's question and clarification of what we did before, where we are now, and what we might do in the future. From my perspective and from what I've heard, I would say that the city's participation in the future of Civic Stadium is in the bottom of the ninth, but the game's not over entirely yet. We have until December 3rd, but from my point of view, I haven't heard anything yet that puts us, that doesn't put the city at extreme financial risk, that allows us to participate. I, too, love the place and see it as a historic community asset, but we simply can't afford all the work that would be involved and all the money involved to renovate it for appropriate use. And so if there is some last-ditch way, I don't think we have time enough for the bonds, and I certainly don't want to ask the school district to slow down or change their process. But if there is another idea, I'd certainly, I just want to say I'd be open to it. But I think we're, as far as moving forward any further from here, we're done.
Chris?
I just had a quick question. I recall when I was on the school board and we first started talking about divesting the property, which was 10 years ago. There was some question around the environmental assessment. As you recall, that parking lot As you recall, that parking lot was used for parking school buses and school bus maintenance for a number of years. And I don't know whether tanks were decommissioned, whether a Level 1 environmental assessment. I recall when the city council proposed to put a homeless camp there, the school district deferred based on concerns over environmental contamination. I don't know whether there's been an assessment done. I just, I didn't see anything in here about even doing a environmental assessment of the parking lot area and the area adjacent to the stadium. I know we had concerns back when I was on the school board. I don't know if anything has been done about that.
There has been work, and it's in their 2010 findings of fact. I can get that information to you. I don't remember all the details of what was decommissioned and commissioned, but it's all in a report I can send back out to you.
That would be great. But in your recollection, did it say that basically the site is okay?
I thought they had addressed it, yeah. Somebody out in the audience might know this. One person's nodding, and one says questionable. I'll send it out to you.
Okay. Yeah, I would just, I would want to make sure that we were not acquiring a site that had any sort of environmental contamination, even to some degree. We just would need to know what that is. And I think there's different kinds of risk. Financial risk, we could probably figure out a way to not have to assume an enormous financial risk, but I think there could be also an enormous perceptual risk around how and what the city is doing with its money. As we've learned in the past, I don't think a lot of people in the community make an enormous distinction between one type of money and another type of money. In fact, some folks don't even make a distinction between county money, city money, and school district money. It's all money. And so we can explain to them, but I don't think that that necessarily is that persuasive. I think if we're using city money, from whichever pot it comes from, to do thing A when they think we should be doing thing B, I think that's a lot of time explaining. And, you know, as I've said before, you know, running governments is like a joke. If you have to explain it, it doesn't work. The people should be very clear on what's going on without having to have long, complicated explanations. And so I'm concerned that the perceptual risk could be very great for us doing this. I really don't like being in the position of sounding like I don't like Civic Stadium, or I hate Civic Stadium, or I'm against Civic Stadium. And I absolutely understand that that's exactly how it sounds. The desire to see Civic Stadium be successful as Civic Stadium is one issue for me. The degree to which the city should become encumbered in this with all of the other things that it has going on, to me, is another conversation. And I know some people can easily put them together. I'm trying to keep them separate so that I can be clear that it's not an opposition to Civic Stadium, as much as it is a desire to be fiscally, financially, and perceptually responsible as a city government. And that really is the driver for me.
So I want to pause here for a second, and maybe Sarah or John will have something that they want to say here, but what I'm going to say is, what I've heard around the table is, three counselors who want to keep moving forward. I've heard three counselors who don't seem to want to be moving forward, and two counselors who are questioning whether we should be moving forward. So I'm asking for, where do we go from here, I guess, and whether you want another conversation, whether you are ready to either keep going or say stop now? So I'm looking for, what are you hoping to do?
I think we'll need direction, because I would agree with Glenn with respect to a plan. What I guess I would just respectfully disagree. What we have said is, the plan, we have said, here's how options for purchasing, here's our assessment of trade, here's our assessment of lease. If you choose to move forward on a purchasing option, then we would want direction on, here's what we want to do, and then we would come back in executive session with deal points, which is different than the plan. And if we don't receive any further direction from council today, we will consider it not moving forward until we get some other further direction from council. So we're looking for direction from council, which would be helpful for us, one way or another, or somewhere in between.
So I am inclined, at this point, to sort of go around the table and ask you sort of the question of, do you want more information? Are you ready to give direction to move forward, or are you ready to give direction to say, not so much? So that's what I'm asking. And I'll start with you, Council Polling.
Not so much.
Hey.
Take no further action.
Bring back a plan for purchase.
Bring back a plan for purchase.
No, there's nothing else for us to do here.
Bring back a plan.
I'd support bringing back a plan.
Uh-oh. It's not where you want to be, Mayor. I say no further action, which makes a 4-4 split.
Well, this is not a vote, so this is a dilemma, then.
Yes, it's a dilemma.
You really told him not to do anything.
Yeah.
So my perspective, which I have shared with people in the past, is if you choose to go forward, I will support that. If it's going to be a split, I am not going to support it. You want to go back to the drawing board? I'm all for you going back to the drawing board, but I think this is of such, this is the kind of thing that you have to, there has to be a little bit more there, there on the part of the, I'm not going to ask for a vote. I'm just telling you, that's where I am right now. Okay.
I have a motion to make.
All right, go ahead, Council Brown.
I'm moving for the city manager to bring back a plan to submit a bid in the 4J process to acquire Civic Stadium property with park bond funds, and a process to determine how after acquisition we might, with community participation and support, renovate the stadium and property for use as a regional sports park and community sports facility with broad public access, at minimum cost to the city. And I'll discuss it if I get a second.
Second.
Thank you. If we take no further action today, we will have lost a chance to preserve a very important community landmark, that yes, it's in, it's deteriorating, but I have been on many work parties there, and it is eminently savable. I mean, we have an estimated cost of around $3 million from Turner Construction, world-famous construction company. They build projects all around the globe, and their Portland office came up with these. That includes the field. I feel certain the community will pitch in and raise the $3 million. There is no suggestion here whatsoever that the city be involved with renovation. But if we don't move this forward today, we will forever lose the chance, barring a miracle, that we'll preserve this landmark, and we did that downtown, starting in 1968. We tore down building after building, beautiful buildings, and they're gone forever. That's why our downtown is, let's face it, it's coming back, it's getting active again, but it's pretty bland. I mean, we lost 90% of our architectural heritage downtown. And this would be broad community use. It would be ASYO, it would be kids' sports. Northwest Christian University is interested, LCC Titans are interested, 4J teams would play there. It would be widely used, it would not be for a small elite of people. Broad sections of the community would be using that, Bluegrass Festivals, you name it. I mean, they used to do all kinds of stuff there, and there's no reason why it can't be brought back to that. But if we don't move forward on this and miss out on the RFP process, it's gone forever. Now, we haven't seen the manager's plan yet. It's possible that a majority of council might reject that plan, but if we don't even see a plan, then it's, you see, it's like, we need to see something. This will give us time to pursue some of these other very valid concerns, you know, ongoing maintenance, all that stuff. It's way too early to shut the door on this. We need, you know, another, maybe one or two more discussions before a plan is submitted to 4J. I mean, and the council majority has to approve whatever plan it is, so to just give up now is inconceivable to me. And it may not work out, you know, that's possible, but unless we move forward with it, we'll never know, and we'll regret it forever and ever and ever.
So I've got Chris, Mike, George Polling, and Claire in the queue. We've got about 10 minutes here. This is what I would like to say. It appears to me we could have another round of everybody saying the same thing, and we would be, end up in exactly the same place. And if you want to have further discussion and try to convince each other one way or another, so you have a more of a solid majority, then don't force this vote. Take more time and talk with each other. If you force the vote today, and it's 4-4, which is the way it looks locked to me, then I'm not going to vote for it. That's the choice in front of you right now. Chris?
No, I don't need to say anything.
Mike?
I believe that the staff and the manager have done the work of giving us our options. I believe they've done the work of fulfilling the motion that was made and passed to bring back detailed information on how we might move forward. I think that it's possible one might creatively find another way that the city could move forward, but I don't know that the staff should spend the time doing that. If someone in the community had an idea about how we might move forward, I wouldn't want to neglect, at least considering that. So the way I understand that you deal with situations like this is to table such a motion, and so I moved to table it.
Second. Moved in second is not debatable. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five in favor, and opposition, three, it is tabled. Have some good conversations. Thank you.
I don't know.